All right, very good. Thanks. Good evening, everyone. I want to call the meeting to order. I'm just gonna pass again. I still don't feel good. I'm just gonna pass to our clerk, Jim Akibachi, and he'll be the acting chair for tonight. Thank you. Do you mind, Jim?
I don't mind. So you called the meeting to order?
Yep.
And we have some meeting minutes from October 9th?
No, we do not have meeting minutes.
Okay.
The administrative person went home sick.
Okay. So we have present Bob, Veronica, myself, Nazzy, Walter, and Ken Buckland. Do we need the last names for the record or?
No, it's fine.
I think we're good.
We have the visual.
Yeah, we have a visual. There you go. The meeting minutes from October 9th will table because they're not available. I think I saw some minutes at one point.
Also, we don't have the minutes?
We don't have. I don't believe. He said that.
No, we don't have minutes.
She went home. She went home sick. So that means that brings us right up to, um...
So I guess we'll push off for next time?
Yeah, yeah. Table to?
The 13.
Um, November 13?
Yeah.
Okay. So, public hearings. Let's get Jonathan Theresa Nudelman up here. Forty-three dash nineteen.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on October 23rd, 2019 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. O2571, to consider petition forty-three nineteen for a special permit or a variance from the requirements of Article 13, Section thirteen fifty-two, Section thirteen fifty-three, and Article six, Table six twenty-one of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Jonathan and Theresa Nudelman of Eight Franklin Street seeking to expand their existing front porch around to the side and rear of their dwelling located at Eight Franklin Street, Wareham, Mass., assessors map nineteen, lot thirty-three in the R sixty zoning district.
For this matter, Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself for conflict with Mr. Churchill. I don't know if Mr. Churchill want to go with four members. I know Jen's coming at seven. If you want to hang around and table for him, I don't know what you want to do or what's his wishes.
What do you? I believe it's a special permit, so I think actually I'm okay with the four members.
You're comfortable. Did you get a plan over there, Walter? Okay.
Yep.
So there was a, um... We did get an email copy of it. I got a chance. I did get a chance to look at some of the information. Looks like this is just a porch, a deck.
Yes, sir. Yep. Basically, what it is, is an extension of an existing porch. Uh, the setback of the existing porch, it's located at Eight Franklin Street. Uh, we did receive a conservation approval on this project. Uh, and you'll see in the magenta, um, and actually a blow up on the right-hand side.
John, can I interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
Just for the record, I don't think you said you need...
Oh, I did not. John Churchill, J.C. Engineering. For the record.
When they transcribe, they're gonna want to know who they're listening. Go ahead.
Representative Theresa and Jonathan. Yep. And basically, uh, what you'll see over in the right, the blow up, if you will, um, is what we're proposing. So there, an existing former, uh, there's a existing porch there, a former existing porch that was out there. It's in the, you can see it in the dark.
I see.
In the black. And what they're looking to do, that's four and a half feet from the property line, front property line. And what they're looking to do is to have a covered porch that extends across the front of the property rather than, uh, house rather than just that half of the house. Um, and then they're gonna do a deck, uh, just a, just a regular, a deck on the side and to the rear. Uh, so it all connects around the, around the house. Uh, basically, this is, you know, what they'd like. You know, you have this existing concrete stoop, uh, on the front of the house. Uh, based on the regulations, uh, special permits required if you're going to... Uh, we're too close to the front property line essentially, uh, with the, with the existing porch. Uh, so what we did is we maintained the existing four and a half feet, uh, extended it, and by extending a non-conforming setback, uh, a special permit is required. And based on the thirteen, the regulation thirteen fifty-two, basically, uh, as part of the special permit application, the applicant would like to reconstruct the existing porch and extend a new porch that will be in compliance with the State Building Code and FEMA requirements. The proposed footprint will meet the side and rear property line setbacks as outlined in Section thirteen fifty-two of the Wareham zoning bylaws, basically. The Board of Appeals shall find that the proposed extension shall not substantially increase the non-conforming nature of the structure nor shall be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood before a building permit can be issued. So I guess the, the nature of what you're looking for is this, is this extension of this enclosed porch? Is this gonna be, um, you know, is the non-conforming nature of the structure uh, gonna be substantially increased? And is it gonna be detrimental to the neighborhood by allowing this? And then for the following reasons. Uh, we feel the construction of the enclosed porch in the deck on the side and rear will not substantially increase the non-conforming nature of this structure nor will it be detrimental to the neighborhood. Uh, the proposed deck and covered porch will continue along the same line of the existing encroachment, so we're not increasing any encroachment in any way. Um, as this project does not propose to modify the size of the existing lot, the pre-existing non-conforming property will not change in size, therefore will not intensify an existing non-conformity. Uh, the height of the structure, no greater than thirty-five feet, as stated in the zoning bylaws, and there'll be no increase in traffic or noise to neighborhood as this dwelling is currently a single-family dwelling and will remain a single-family dwelling. Basically, um, it's an extension of an existing non-conformity which requires the special permit. Whereas if we didn't extend it, it'd just be a simple building permit.
I got you. And I did read your response before you came in. I think you did a pretty good job with that. Um, turn into the board on my left, Walter. Do you have any questions of this applicant?
Um, no, no, I'm fine. I mean, um, it had an existing porch there, so I'm fine with it, and it looks like, um, I don't see anybody here to object to it. I mean, it looks like he's got plenty of lot, so I have no problems with it.
Bob, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Veronica?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Um, even though it looks like there's nobody here, I'm still gonna say it for the record. Is there anybody from the public that would like to come forward and speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Hearing none, we can move forward. I'd like to comment that the letter that's in our folder here from J.C. Engineering pretty much outlines why we could say yes. I'd also like to say that the letter from the building inspector, which is dated November thirteenth, 2018. They've been thinking about this for a while, huh? Almost a year.
Yeah, they, they actually were trying to go a little closer to the front property line, so it took me three, four months to talk them out requesting a variance and going for a special permit.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah, they, they wanted to go a foot closer.
I noticed the November thirteenth letter from the building inspector, and I figured they had to be, you know, a month or two before that, 'cause he doesn't write letters quick.
No, no.
And it's not even the same person anymore. But anyway.
Yep.
I'm looking at the building inspector's response. There's three bullets. The first bullet is Article six, Table six twenty-one, residential district, sixty feet. Front yard setback. Well, I think we can pretty much, as a board, look at that and say, if we go back to the zoning bylaws that were in place when this house was built, they conformed.
Correct.
And so I'm pretty sure it's been universally applied that that's one of the things we look at. So let's throw that right off the table. Let's jump the middle one and look at the last one. The third bullet says that if we find that it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, it would re-require a variance. Well, you've mailed the whole neighborhood. We have on a butters list, and nobody came. So it doesn't seem like, it doesn't appear to the board, at least if I'm speaking wrong, somebody yell, "Wait a minute." Doesn't appear to the board that there's any objection. Doesn't seem to be detrimental to the neighborhood. So we'll kind of throw that one out. And let's focus on the fact that we need a special permit. I think the board has to actually vote that we do not find it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood so that we can consider it a special permit.
Before you do that, I wanted to point out something here.
I'm sorry, Ken. I didn't give you a chance to speak. Go ahead.
It's okay. I, I jump in anyway.
That's right. That's what I said, jump in when the...
The, uh, the side yard setback towards lot thirty-two. The standard is to be ten feet, and it appears that that is less than ten.
You're talking about the street side where the existing concrete, um, step is now?
You see where the, uh, on the, uh, as you face the house from the, uh, from the, from the street, it's on the right-hand side. There's that little bit of the extension of the, uh...
Oh, okay, that little bit, yeah.
Porch and the overhang, uh, and the, and the covered porch.
It's a chimney or something.
That, that, that isn't identified, but it scales at slightly less than ten feet. To be, to be clean on this one, you should probably also include that as the extension of the non-conformity, non-conformity on that side. Unless you have information that suggests it's ten feet.
I would need a scale to... Here, oh, here it is. So...
Okay. We got six feet, one inches to whatever that is on that side of the house.
Twenty-two's ten.
Pardon me?
Right, it was six feet, one, and the setback is, I don't know, Ken, it's right at ten. Uh, it scales right at ten, so...
At the...
I would presume that my guys would have, yeah. I mean, we, six point one is the existing, and I'm scaling it right at...
Well, six point one is the existing, what is that, a bulkhead? What is that little bump out on the house?
Yeah, it's just a bump out from, yeah, it's a...
Is it just part of the structure?
Exactly. It's part of the existing structure.
And that's, that's not the part that I was concerned...
He, he, but he's talking six foot one from there, so we're trying to assume that there's another four feet, that bump out. Is that, is that bump out four feet?
Um, I think what, what, what Mr. Buckland may be referring to is the fact that the existing corner of that house could be nine point eight feet instead of ten.
Okay.
I believe. So when I tie in the porch to that point, then we're gonna be within the, point two feet within. The way I scale it, again, I apologize that that dimension is not on the plan. Um, am I correct with...
I see what he's referring to.
I'm guessing as well, and it, 'cause it...
Okay, yes.
I don't know, the cat drawing for me, with me.
So I guess we would be asking for, um, and then that is, you know, that existing is, it's existing as well, that, that, uh, structure at that point. So we're getting no closer at that point as well than it currently exists. So in other words, if you're looking at the house from the road, we're looking at that right corner and the sideline between lot thirty-two. So the existing house and where we're tying in the enclosed porch and where the current overhang already is, that may be less than ten feet. So what Mr. Buckland's saying is maybe in this approval, uh, allow us to not have to pull that back three inches um, and, and allow us to go to the corner of the house. So it's essentially the same special permit request, which is continuing on the same line. Um, so it'd just be maybe included if possible, if this board could include in their decision that the front and sideline between lot thirty-two, uh, they allow us to continue in that same line. I guess that would be great, um, I believe.
That's exactly right. It's a C.Y.A. move, but it's...
Yes, and I appreciate it, 'cause we don't want to come back. Apparently, there's a lot of people that want to talk to you guys tonight.
It'd be continued as drawn, wouldn't it?
Continue as drawn?
Well, I mean, included to these dimensions that he's showing us.
Oh, yeah, as drawn, yeah.
Yeah, we're just gonna reference this plan.
Exactly. I think a special permit approval, uh, referring to this plan, would raise the, really, uh, 'cause any extension requires a special permit approval. So any extension of a non-conformity on a non-conforming lot, and that's what we're asking for essentially, is an extension of a non-conformity in which is the setbacks, the front and, I guess, the side.
Yeah, and the inspector didn't, um, didn't cite lot coverage or any of that. His concern was, I'm going back to his letter.
Yeah, I did look at lot coverage. Uh, six hundred and eighty feet is the existing structure. Um, we would need fifteen thousand square feet in order... It's twenty-five percent in this, in the zoning district for a six thousand square foot lot in an R thirty, based upon the zoning table.
So we're good?
Yeah, we're well under. Where, even that enclosed porch at four times thirty-two, uh, which is, uh, quick math, hundred and twenty plus the six eighty, um, you're looking at about eight hundred.
I'm comfortable if we reference this plan as long as the rest of the board's comfortable, as long as we reference this plan. It's, um, it's dated August twenty-first, 2019.
I would reference it for setbacks only. Just for what's drawn for setbacks? That way he'd have to conform to, because I don't know if, you know, all of this, somebody might take... We're only approving that he can build this according to the setbacks he has.
That's right.
Right. I wouldn't want somebody to get confused. Yeah.
You're approving the extension of the non-conforming, uh, front yard setback and the side yard setback as they were continued and extended with this, this, uh, project.
And if I may, it's actually revision number two, September seventeenth, 2019, too. Just so we make sure that the correct, uh, plan date. Yeah, so it's dated, uh, we revised this twice, so to get where we're at.
All right, I got August twenty-first, two nineteen, and then revised September seventeen, two nineteen.
Correct. Yep, revision number two. Perfect. Thank you.
I only read the August one. You're right.
That, that's why I wanted to make sure, 'cause we've seen it before where the building inspector wouldn't issue a building permit 'cause it didn't match the plan that you guys, or...
Yep.
What was voted on.
So I go back to where I was a couple minutes ago. I think the first thing we need is a motion that this is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
Do you want to close the hearing first before you start making decisions?
Okay. I want a motion. I'll stop trying to direct it and let you guys figure out what to say.
Motion to close, uh, the hearing to the public?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You can't talk anymore.
Thanks, sir.
Be quiet. What's the wishes of the board? Do we have a motion?
Um, I'd like to motion, um, that, uh, we approve the setbacks as shown on the plan dated September seventeenth, 2019, um, that they follow the setbacks shown as drawn.
So you wanna, you're, you're making a motion to grant a special permit?
Special permit dated on the plan September seventeenth, 2019, as drawn.
Do I have a second on that?
A second.
The motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? You're all set.
Great, thank you so much.
Four zero zero.
Appreciate it. Sorry you guys had to come out for us.
That's all right.
I know what it's like to do that. Thank you, guys.
I'm glad that...
You better hurry up before they run in.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Special permit grant four zero zero. I won't call it Jasmine anymore. Sign ya. We're good on that. Does it get something to sign? Everything in? Yep, yep, yep. I'll trade with ya. What do we do with our chairman when he recuses himself on this? Does he still sign or do...
No.
No.
No?
Can't. I don't think you should.
Okay.
Just, uh, and you have a four-member board, so you're, you're going with what you got, and you have enough to...
So on this one here, I'm, I'm signing on as clerk. Do you, you want me to put anything on, uh, acting chair, or do you want just...
Yeah, please. Yeah.
For the records, so nobody else needs that copy. You guys got that.
Do you guys want any conditions? No?
No, no conditions.
No, we just, um...
Standard conditions. Yeah, we did condition it to the plan.
For the plan.
We, we referenced a plan, Naz. The plan is, um, by J.C. Engineering. And it's dated August twenty-first.
Oh, those were revised September twenty-one.
Yeah, I know. It's dated August twenty-first, 2019, and revised September seventeenth, 2019. Walter?
Yep. Let me borrow a pen.
Dated August, uh...
Here we go. We get the flying pen.
The plan was August twenty-first and revised September seventeenth, both in nineteen.
I can sign that back, but I wouldn't throw it.
No, I just want to hear what you have to say.
And this goes in the folder. We want to put this with that one that Walter, there we go. Oh, I get my, is this my pen or?
Yeah, yeah, this is your pen.
There you go.
And... You got it bad. No, I got it still. Continued, continued public hea... That's it for public hearings for this evening. So continued public, twenty-three eighteen, Anthony Grasso, One Ray Avenue. Um, he's not here. I know he sent either a letter or contacted...
In your, in your folder, you have this.
In the folder we have... I got it.
A continuance.
Continuing to December eleventh.
Yeah.
And extending the, the time to make a decision to, uh, Jen.
For the record, I've recused from voting on this, so I won't.
All right, I, uh, okay, I'll take it over then. I think we should, uh, that's been going for over a year.
Yes, now.
I think, yeah. Uh, I think this is the deadline, December eleven. That's the last time he has to come by. Otherwise, on December eleven, we're gonna have to act either yes or a no. Okay, so for right now, would you, somebody would like to make a motion to grant him an extension to December eleven?
Make a motion, we grant the extension.
December eleven, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have a second first.
I second.
Second by Walter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so it's December eleven.
So you could do that with or without prejudice, too.
Uh, one time come, December eleven, right? Yeah, most likely will be without prejudice, but we'll see how it goes.
Do we each sign this form and hand it in? 'Cause don't we have to all sign?
No, you don't. Only, only the chairman has to sign.
The what? What? The extension? Yeah, one person, me or Jim?
Jim got it.
All got it? Okay.
We took, um, just for clarification for Veronica, because she's going like that.
She wasn't here, yeah.
And before Bob was here and before Walter was here. So maybe we should revote this. So, um, before any of you three that I just mentioned were members of the board, the board voted that on matters such as this, the clerk can sign on behalf of the board so everybody doesn't have to sign. So if something needs to be signed, I can run down to the hall and you guys don't have to and so forth.
Minutes, extensions.
Yeah, because I, I remember reading that you had to have all the signatures for extensions.
Right, but we voted that the clerk can do it.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, I knew you were...
'Cause it was going through my mind going, I know I read that we all have to sign, but...
So if you guys feel as though it's appropriate to revisit that and revote on it, if you feel differently about it...
Well, can I, can I ask you, that's based on all of us voting anyway, so we're all agreeing, correct?
Yeah.
Whoever has the authority to sign doesn't just go sign without the agreement.
It's not giving anybody unilateral authority.
Yeah.
It's just requiring one signature instead of four or five.
I can't get to the town hall. I told you that. I'm like three minutes away.
That's like me, like me mailing a letter.
Can't get there?
I'm telling you, I had a stack of papers I just gave to Ken that I've been meaning to bring, stopped by.
Yeah, that's like me mailing a letter, right? We can't mail a letter?
Yes, the post office is right.
Right across the street.
You know how many times I'm like, I gotta get to that post office.
Is there any other business needs to be brought up?
Uh, I just wanted to, uh, under the staff report, let you know that I've, I've started a discussion on reducing fees for, for smaller-sized projects. Uh, one of the complaints I've been getting in the office is the fees that we've been charging.
Three hundred bucks to come here and say, Mary.
For a porch that's only worth a thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree, yeah.
I agree also.
Me too.
I didn't see it, but I'm happy to hear it.
It's gone a sliding scale, right?
Well, I think it was...
Well, one of, one of the other options, instead of trying to reduce the fee, is also to set up the criteria by which you could say, this, this does not have a substantial impact, and so can, is a de minimis project and could proceed without going through the permit review. Because the biggest cost in the permit review isn't necessarily the, the application fee. A lot of cases, people have, don't have, um, site plans or, uh, and, and they have to go to somebody like the local surveyor and, and get, get a survey.
So is that something that would, could also potentially be waived if, depending on the cost of the project? Is that what you mean? 'Cause I thought that was prohibitive, having someone come and put a ten-by-ten deck on and have to get a site plan.
The way the rules are written right now, that they're supposed to have it, but we can waive it.
We can waive it?
I, I, I don't think a special permit and a variance should be waived because you're so critical. When you, when you're setback ten feet, you wanna do, you wanna say you get six. You get very critical. You want that six. It has to be surveyed. If you do want, let's say, we, if you do want a special permit within your, you don't need no va... For setbacks, special permit to add the roof or so on, I would agree. But when you get to setbacks, then the neighbor come over, say, oh, it's supposed to be six feet. The, the foundation guy made a mistake. It's, it's four feet. I, I don't personally, our, our experience...
You'd like to see it?
It's very critical. It needs a surveyor. This is a, a must. And plus, not to mention, when you given a special permit and a variance, you hand in, it's, I shouldn't say gifted, it's the land, but you hand in the applicant a gift la encroche, so...
You've given them something that are...
We're not saying, uh, that's, we, like, the town own his land. He's entitled of it, of course, under the rules, but because the dimensions are become tight, I, I strongly agree.
Now, what about, what about when, um, for instance...
Just for, just for an example, one time, uh, my foundation guy made a mistake with the bulkhead, one feet. Uh, the setback is twenty, and it was nine feet. We, we decided to jackhammer it versus coming to a special permit. We, we jackhammer it, make it twenty feet.
Now, what about in the instance, with this case, for instance, that just came? He's not increasing the non-conformity. He's staying in line with what's existing. Now, what about in that kind of a situation?
Well, that's, that's the same reason why I brought up that, that mention on the setback on the side. Because if a neighbor of his was, was aggrieved or, or got mad for some reason and start saying, you're closer than the setback, and you didn't get a permit for it.
Oh, on that other side?
Yeah.
That little corner.
And they could, they could have to pull out the jackhammers, just like
He's close, he's real close.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, he drove by.
Yeah, so, I, I do agree with fees, maybe you could, can come up with a theory, say, anything under cost of project, under three thousand fifty dollars, maybe, but I personally, I, it has, with our experience with, with development, with building, with roads, everything, survey, stamp, surveying plan is a must, because you have, say, a lady or a guy comes in, he draw this plan for you, and he makes the setback six feet, and he go build it, said, oh, sorry, I'm not an engineer, I build it two feet, so then what you tell him?
Tear it down, right?
No.
No, you can't, because you
It's built, what do you got to tell him? You let him do it, he's not an engineer, so he doesn't have, he, sorry.
I did, I measured it with a tape measure, I wrapped the tape measure around my hand three times, and pulled it out, and got four feet.
I would say, site plan must
That's how we used to sell firewood.
With a surveyor.
So, so, can I just clarify for me then, how that works with J.C.? Does the site surveyor mark where the deck goes, is that what you're saying?
Of course.
Yeah, they'll, they'll shoot, once they shoot your boundaries, then they'll figure it out, now that, you know, they do it all, I don't care, but
What he's trying to do, it's over now, we can talk about it.
Yeah.
He setback, how much is setback there, R sixty, thirty feet?
He's not increasing, so he has four feet from the front
Yeah.
On the front of his house, all he did was stay
Straight.
He did the length, he stayed straight, so he's increasing the size of the porch, but he's not increasing the nonconformity, like
He's extending the nonconforming
He's made it the whole length of the front of his house, instead of just part.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, well, he needs to stake it, make sure the line is straight.
But they say, yeah, if they say they're
Believe me, a lot of time when I'm building, we have an engineer, he stakes the foundation for us, a lot of time, I hear J.C. or other firms, and we have plenty of setbacks, plenty of room, we, he stakes the foundation, we go out, dig it, just, just not to take a chance, we pay again, he comes, stake it in the hole.
Yeah.
Believe me, and we have plenty, imagine when you have four feet or five feet, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote for it.
You should have a patch on your eye, that's probably why it's bothering you, because you're not blinking it at all.
I close at night. Oh, no, it's not closing at all.
No, I know, that's probably why it's bothering you a lot, it's getting dried out.
So, anyway, so
All right, well, to, to change, the size and scale on the fees requires this board to hold a public hearing to change the rules and regulations that you have in place.
So, could we get a draft proposal of the changes?
And see whether or not you want to take it to a public hearing.
And then we'll take it to a public, can we do it that way?
Sure.
I would say, we'll see what, what Ken recommends.
Yeah.
Maybe increasing fee up to five thousand of the project, and after five thousand regular fee, maybe, you might say maybe up to three thousand, maybe, I don't know.
We just, whatever he recommends, we should change it just a little bit, so, you know.
So, see what's fair. But, but I would not waive, and we've been making it, it's been working, it's been since day one, remember when we said, that's it, you got to come up with the survey plan?
Yep.
And everybody's been doing it, I think we should keep it this way, no question asked, because it will come back to haunt us, they're going to say
Yeah, that makes sense, I wasn't thinking about
I had to do it on my, I've set my house four feet, because I don't want to deal with my neighbors
Say the guy said, okay, say, we grant an applicant six feet setback, based on J.C. engineering plan, the guy goes out and build it four feet, and J.C.'s liable, town's not liable, he's, we, we set according to plan, and he has a plan, this surveyor should have stated for him, but so it's between him and the contractor.
Oh, okay.
We're not liable.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, we survey everything, even the big high rises we do, when we do the interiors, we have engineers that tell us exactly where the pipes and the columns go, even though we look at the plans, that college kid gets on that survey
I know, but I just thought that J.C. still had to come out and do his measurements, I didn't know.
You know, because you're doing twenty, thirty stories.
You got to be careful.
You can't get up to thirty stories, go, man, this bathroom don't line up with the first floor bathroom.
It's very small.
It don't work, it's not like a house, I'll just shift it.
If the, if the rule says there's supposed to be ten feet from the line
Yeah.
and they want to be nine feet from the line, they're asking for something special. So, there's a cost involved, and the cost is hiring an engineer to prove
So, that's three thousand dollars plus already.
No, it's not, it's not, no, I've done, I mean, when you set plan, maybe a thousand
Well, depending on the size of the project.
Yeah, exactly, but some like a decade, that's probably a thousand bucks, but like, like Jim said, it, it's a gift you're encroaching, you're making it, it's, you can, and again, it's your land, but you get a special treatment, so you should at least pay for the engineer.
Oh, it's good to have your survey lot anyway.
Here's where I have a big objection to the fees, somebody, somebody goes to the clerk at the town hall and says, I want to register my business, and the clerk says, yeah, sure, here's a piece of paper, go get everybody in the world to sign it and say that it's okay, the fire department, the police department, you know, the board of health, yada, 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 it's a conforming use, including the building inspector. So, then they go down to the building inspector, and he says, I'm not signing this, so now they don't have a, huh?
Why he's not signing it?
Because his interpretation is different.
He could appeal it to all the zoning
So, now they got to pay three hundred dollars to appeal it, to get a fifty-dollar business certificate.
Yeah.
You know, because he made a bad decision.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, but
I have a good point.
Yeah, but, yeah.
So, I don't care if you leave it three hundred bucks, or if you change the fee, I feel if we make the decision, if we make the decision that the building inspector's decision was wrong
No, I would say
They don't have to pay the fee.
If I may
Go ahead.
I would say, only in business license will clerk, because it's fifty bucks to get a business license, or twenty-five?
It's fifty bucks, everybody is supposed to go give the clerk fifty bucks.
Fifty bucks, I would say to appeal
You don't have to do it.
I would say to appeal this, it should be free. And No, I shouldn't, I, I would say, it shouldn't be an appeal, informal, you come informal before us, and we will try, but you cannot enforce the building inspector that way.
No, you have to have a regular appeal process.
Yeah, yeah, regular appeal.
Yeah, but that would be, so what would you go based on, like, just like you said, if it's under a certain amount, the project, so how, how do you value the project of what you're in the business?
Like something like this, I would say we come free, if you want to appeal the building commissioner's decision, like Jim said, I want to make, I want to make a marketing business out of my house, on the computer, I call people, sell them things, so you go sign the plumber, and the electric, electrical inspector, fire department, saying, yeah, his house is safe, his phone works, he could do, and the building inspector says, oh, you know what, you're not a conforming
It's not listed as an allowed use therefore, it's not allowed.
To make phone calls and sell people, so in this case, if you, if he doesn't, now, a lot of people, banks and stuff, you need a business certificate to open an account, you understand, or insurance or so on, so I would say in this case, he's going to have, the applicant will have to appeal the, the, the building commission and the decision to us, I would say it should be free, because it's only fifty bucks worth of money.
Yeah, if it goes to a public hearing, they'd still need to have the, the publication in the paper and the notices to be better
Right, but make no mistake, if the person trying to make, let's say, a supermarket in his house, that's different.
That's different.
Of course, he's going to have to come and appeal.
If there's an obvious
Then he has to pay
Then there's an obvious reason to deny, but if the reason for denying is, no, I'm just not agreeing to this, I
Now, what about having the fee refundable, if it, if the board finds that
It wasn't allowed use.
Yeah.
You can't refund it, it needs town meeting to give money back, the people
Once they take it, that's it.
Give it back.
Good luck.
The body has to vote.
I remember that woman that came in here, was screaming about the three hundred bucks, remember that, that case that came
There you go.
You know?
The board
Nothing is always fair, but in most cases, it's fair, but it's never fair to everyone,
I understand, but ninety-nine percent is fair, some people is unfair, and life is not fair, so
But when you pull out that surveyed lot, there's no questions asked.
Yeah, exactly.
This is an absolute, that's an absolute, but
That's it, once you have that stamp
Like I said, Ken could come up with a theory, with the proportion, like, the percentage of the project, and we see, we discuss, and we go from there.
Now, how come a business wouldn't fall under that anyway? Trying to open a business.
Well, first of all, this is kind of
You mean what Jimmy's talking about?
First of all, there's no rule in the world that I'm aware of, that says a business has to register their business with the town clerk. Originally, and, and now I'm showing my age a little bit, originally, people used to go down to the town hall and register their business, because if the Better Business Bureau or Dun &amp; Bradstreet or somebody called, they'd say, yep, they are a legitimate business in our town, they're registered with the town, they've come down to the town and they've registered, they gave us fifty bucks once, and they're covered for as long as they're in business. So, that was what originally happened, and then the town says, ah, look, it's a source of revenue, let's charge everybody fifty bucks every two years.
Spalda, right?
Two years.
Every two years, give us another fifty bucks, just to say you're, you're in business in our town.
I'd take
Then you go to get registered as a business, and again, they send you on this goose chase. Here's a list of everybody
Yeah, but, just, just to speak on the
Yeah, the other side of, the other side of the coin.
It's good that you have to sign, let's say you want to be a hair salon, it's good for the electrical inspector to go check, make sure the plugs work.
That's all good, that's all good.
And, you know, so they cannot say the hair salon needs to get a certificate, we need all the signature
Like to make a motion to close the meeting?
But we provide for, we provide for
What did you say, I'm sorry?
Oh, I said, I'd like to make a
We provide for a hairdresser.
He wants to adjourn, yeah, of course you could make a motion.
Jim, we got to stop this discussion.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, we do, if you want to leave, you could adjourn.
Yeah, I'm ready to go.
He's ready, okay, you can make a motion.
Motion to close the meeting.
Motion's adjourned, I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Was done, okay, thank you, we can keep talking about it, if you